All right, it being seven o'clock, the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The first order of business is old and new business approval of the minutes from January 14, 2020. Nancy, did those get sent out?
I, yeah, they probably went out in February, for the February meeting.
Oh, you're right, you're right, all right, yep.
Will be approved, Andrew.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up. It's not quite 7:05.
It's, um.
This is the.
Is Amy here?
I don't believe Amy's coming to this, no.
Uh, Nancy?
I thought, I thought she was.
He's entering the room now.
There we go.
Amy.
How are you guys?
How are you?
It's nice to see you guys.
You too.
You too.
I'm glad everybody's well. Hi, Sean.
He's muted.
All right, so, next up. Is the continued hearing petition of Rockland Realty Trust, Jason Kennedy trustee, 208 Center Street Avenue. All right, is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Sean Riley, representing the applicant Jason Kennedy of Rockwood Realty Trust. Jason's online as the property owner, Mr. Mr.
All right, so just to refresh our recollection, this is a continued hearing. We previously met and we had requested some additional information. Since that time, you've submitted an updated proposed site plan, which made various amendments to the original site plan that you submitted, correct?
Just a minor amendment, there was a.
Straightening of the.
Right, we were straightening the lot line between the two buildings. And then it was requested that we show the setbacks off all four corners, which we've done. Mr. Clapp, who is the registered land surveyor, has submitted the plan. And the request is for the side yard variances of five feet and 11 feet. I don't know if you want me to go through the entire presentation all over again, but I think it was really just to confirm the receipt of the plan as requested.
No, and I mean, at our initial hearing, we had a lengthy discussion regarding, you know, essentially the, the topography, that sort of where the situation on land, where you're, you're going to put the proposed, the proposed dwelling in Howard, basically that's the only feasible location, given the, the way the lot is structured, or at least from a practical standpoint.
Yeah, I'm happy to go through everything or answer any questions you have before you take your vote, but I also don't want to hold you up. It was my understanding that the board was satisfied that we had made a, a presentation that justified the variances at the first hearing. And as you know, there was, we were continuing from February due to a lack of quorum, so we're now here in the third month. But I believe the plan addresses or responds to the issues that were mentioned in the January hearing.
I don't have any, any members of the board have any additional questions?
Um, Sean, could you, uh, could you describe what the Todd zone is?
Todd is a transit oriented development district, which was initially enacted by the town for the area surrounding or nearby the commuter rail station. And it was, it allows for commercial uses as of right. So as we discussed in January, we could build a commercial building on this property. You can also build mixed use, which is commercial on the first floor with apartments or condos on the second, third, and fourth floor. That's also allowed as a right. But if you want to do 100% residential, meaning you want to do a multi-family building or a single-family building, you need a special permit from the planning board, and that was previously granted.
And Glenn already in front of them this?
The reason we're here at the zoning board is to allow us to, it's really for the location of the single-family house. We'd like to put it in line with the other houses on the street, instead of putting it 200, 250 feet back off the street behind the other houses. And for the reasons we previously stated, which you also have in writing, by the way, we think it's a textbook case of where variance could be granted for the benefit of not only the, the home builder, but also the neighboring, the neighbors to the left and right and behind us. I would remind the board that we would request that a condition be added to your approval, and which we've already agreed to with our neighbor, and that would be that we'd be planting a row of arborvitae on the west side of this house, from the front to the back of the house.
And so this zone was developed for, and I do remember, I watched the whole planning board meeting the other day, and it ended with you talking about the Todd zone. And, and that produces like, um, grant money for the town and stuff like that with your development in that area.
No.
Multiple, multiple developments, correct?
You're mixing apples and oranges. No, the hearing that you must have watched was last, the last planning board hearing in May, in March. We were in front of the planning board in January, I think, for this project.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the zone itself, you had brought up the zone in the last, at the last.
At the end of the last planning board meeting, right, we had.
And that's why this, this area was developed for, was for grant money and, and, development of businesses and apartments or condos and stuff like that, correct?
The Todd district allows for mixed uses and commercial uses. Residential only needs a special permit. What we were discussing at the end of the last planning board meeting, which isn't really relevant to this request, was the recent housing choice law that got passed by the state, which, you know, we're going to talk about with the planning board more often, and I hope the zoning board will actually get involved in that discussion. Because the housing choice law, and I'm not town council, and it's not on the agenda tonight, has some incentives for towns that if they abide by some of the provisions of the housing choice law, it allows you to continue to be eligible for certain state grants. And if you do not conform in certain ways, then you lose eligibility to get certain state grants.
Okay, so what we have on this property though, let's look at this property, we are creating a variance.
No, you're not. Well, you're creating a side yard variance, not a use variance, side yard setback variance.
Right, exactly. So we're creating, so, and when I talked to you before, you said that if this property was sold, there's nothing stopping from some, someone from developing up back, correct?
Right, I can go back through it all if you'd like, I'll show my screen. We, we had multiple options that they looked at.
Right, yep.
Which you could build, the, the goal of the Whalens, they own the Victorian house at 208 Center Avenue. Their goal was that house is near and dear to them, but they are retiring and moving on. And they didn't want, they wanted to find a buyer who would renovate that existing Victorian, and then only build a single family on the remaining land, even though the zoning bylaw allows.
You have two children, forget that.
To do much more than that. They could build them, as we mentioned, two, three, one large commercial building as of right, just need site plan review. They could build mixed use as of right, take down the Victorian or build something next to the Victorian. Out back, there's plenty of land.
Yeah.
So.
But by putting this house here though, it's basically blocking, blocking someone from developing out back.
Yes, the goal of all parties, including the neighbors, yes. Because there's a pond, it's Island Grove Pond is out back.
Right, I, I understand that, but, I mean, this variance should stay with this house, this property. This variance should be conditioned that if you take, even if you tear it down, I don't even know how you'd stop, I mean, the goal of this is to stop someone from building behind this house that they're building right now.
If you approve, if you approve the application that Rockwood Realty Trust has submitted, you, you cannot build another house or building out back behind there unless you literally bought some houses and ripped them down.
Yes. So that variance is staying there, and you're creating a variance, but still you're blocking, you're trying to block from these, these lots from being developed.
That's, that's one way to say it, right. This variance helps to minimize development in this area.
But this area in town was not meant for a house to be built right there for the development to be stopped. But they own the property, so, I mean, they can do what they want with the property. That's why they're in front of us.
Yeah, the use has already been decided by the planning board.
Right.
Basically, the issue was, we got, that entire side of the street, with the exception of the corner of Park Avenue, is residential.
Yeah.
So the thought was, why put a commercial building in between a Victorian and Mr. Buckley's house? It was better to have another residential use there, but to do that, you need side yard setback variances because of a quirk in the Todd district, which says, any multifamily mixed use or commercial building only needs to be 10 foot off the sideline. We could do that, but once you go to 100% residential use, now you're going to be 25 feet off the sideline. That requires a variance, so we're still more than 10 feet, which is the standard Todd setback for the side yard. We are.
Yep, I see it, yep. So, all right, well, I just want to make sure that, um, I mean, I can see what the, the owners are looking for, but we are creating a variance. I mean, the board should know that, there are, a variance is being created, so they can build a house that will block, construction behind them to keep that open space. There's nothing stopping anyone from coming in afterwards and, like you said, tearing down some houses and building in there as a right, if you will. So, um.
That's true.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
Anything else from the board? No?
No, I have good.
Opening up to the floor? Anybody here to speak on this? Like, what do you, raise your hand?
They can, um, send, they can use the chat.
Chat function, yeah.
You have to let anybody know if they wanted to talk, or I suppose they can wave at you on video. But, I'm not aware of anyone here for that, for this meeting.
All right, I'm not seeing anything come through the chats, I'll close it to the floor. All right, members of the board, what are your thoughts?
Could I, Mr. Chairman, could I just ask one thing? Amy, do you have any thoughts?
Thank you. No, I, I don't. As I said earlier in the hearing, I mean, in the previous hearing, I should say. I do think that they are eligible for a variance because of the shape of the lot. The shape, the, um, the water comes up at a weird angle, and, um, so I think that the shape of the lot with regard to, and, and then when you take the shape of the lot and you put it in between the other two properties where their residential dwellings are, I do think that they qualify for a variance under 48 Section 10, and also under your variance standards, which mimic 48 Section 10.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, could, would you mind if I just shared the wording of the requested variance and the condition, just so if, if it was implied, they can recite that as their motion?
Sure.
Is that all right, if I put that up there?
Yep.
Oh, this is an us.
If I can remember to do this right.
It's another, um.
Somebody's not muted, I don't think. This is the, um, the applicant requests that the zoning board vote to grant the 11-foot side yard setback variance and a five-foot side yard setback variance to allow a single-family home to be constructed in the location shown in the submitted plan, dated December 21, 2020, and revised through January 27, 2021, subject to the condition that a hedge row of green giant arborvitae be planted along the western side lot line area from the front to the back of the new house.
So, so Attorney Riley, the, um, the, the planting is only going to be, um, the planting is going to be determined by the location of the house?
Right, you're right. There already is some, are some trees over there, you know, they just want to be supplemented.
Um, so, so if possible, we would want to state that the, that the zoning board of appeals is granting a variance due to the unusual shape of the lot. And then that the, and then that the zoning board grants an 11, blah, 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 blah.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that due to the shape, and I think topography was brought up.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I would say too, that I mean, it's in keeping with the current, I mean, it's not, you know, taking away, currently residential and is going to remain a residential, so, um, certainly not detrimental to the area.
Yes.
So I would make a motion that due to the shape and the topography of the lot, that we grant an 11-foot side setback variance and a five-foot side setback variance to allow, to allow a single-family home to be constructed in the location shown on the plan submitted, dated December 21, 2020, revised through January 27, 2021, subject to the condition that a hedge row of green giant arborvitae be planted along the western, western side lot line area from the front to the back of the new house.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time and patience.
All right, it being after 7:10, the board will now hear the petition of Scott Williamson, 238 Park Avenue. If there's anyone here on that petition, can you, um, notify the chatroom so we can unmute you?
Yeah, Williamson.
Mr. Williamson?
Sir.
There you are. How are you, sir?
Good, you?
Good, thank you. Um, oh, I'm sorry, can the vice chair read the, um, application?
Yeah, Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday. Thursday, February 11th, 2021 at 7:10 PM via Zoom on the petition of Scott Williamson, 238 Park Avenue, Abington, for a special permit under 175-26-C for an oversized garage at 238 Park Avenue. The property is located on Assessors Map 32, Lot 14, in the R30 Zone. Link will be posted on the agenda or email. Andrew Leverell, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, Mr. Williamson, would you like to let us know what you have, what you're proposing?
It's a three-car, um, semi-attached garage for parking vehicles and.
Thank you.
For a family room above.
Okay. Anything special about it? I mean, are you doing any sort of mechanical things in there, or just, just a big garage?
It's just a big garage.
Fair enough. All right. Um, I haven't had a chance to review the plans, I do, um, I, I think it's, you know, in terms of what it's going to look like, I, I think it's appealing in terms of the curb appeal of it, looks like it's, it's almost in a sense, you don't necessarily notice, or at least I didn't, you know, that it was that large. It seems to sort of fit in with the character of the house. So.
See, it's very hard to look at the plans, so we're, got to use a magnifying glass here.
Did you not, Rich, did you not get the?
I, I, I did get the, the lodge one, but it really doesn't make much sense to me, I was attached to the house. It wasn't showing the whole house. Do we have bylaws on the, um, three-car garages?
Oversized garage, it's in 120, 175, I just had it up.
Did you? It says about three-car garages?
I don't think it necessarily makes a distinction, what is it, 26?
26C. That's supposed to be more than 875 square feet unless you get a special permit.
I mean, it's a, it is a very large garage. And when I looked at it on the map, is it where the trees are at right now? Are you cutting the trees down?
No, sir.
Or you're going right out to the back?
No, so it's where, there's a garage there currently that we're going to take down, and then it's going to sit right with that current garage, it's bigger than the current garage, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big lot and it's a big house.
It is, yeah, that's true, yeah.
I don't think it, it's from the, the look of the neighborhood, I think it's, uh.
Yeah, I kind of, when I did look at it, it did kind of, I just was wondering about three-car garages in the town. We had something on that, Bush Marshall was there.
What?
Uh, three-car garages, I, I just remembered, it was something.
Designing what, Glenn's. No, it doesn't. It's a Zoom meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if, if, um, if we, if we were to grant this variance for a three-car garage, would, would there be a need to, to set any qualifications that no commercial operation could be, be done at that location? Or is that necessary?
I don't believe that'd be necessary, because I don't, I don't think you couldn't have a commercial.
Because of the zoning.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Um, what is, what zone are we in? When the R30, or that you could have a commercial garage in an R30 zone?
Right. And it does say here that, um, provides as many as three vehicle, because, so I guess, three garage doors would be okay. Yep. Again, like you said, you're not going to be repairing anything in there or running a business out of there.
Not at all.
Yeah, automotive repair shops, automotive repair vehicles are not allowed in the R20 zone or the R30 zone.
Okay, I see this one now where, where the house is, okay. All right.
And, and, Bob, this is just a special permit, this is in a variance.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, anyone else on the board have any questions?
I do not.
Open up to the floor, is anyone here on the Williamson petition, 238 Park Avenue? If you could just, um, make yourself known in the chatroom, can unmute you? All right, I don't see anybody. Closing it to the floor. What are the thoughts of the board?
Does Amy have anything on this? No, I'm not sure, just asking.
Sorry, I do, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm late. Um, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, that it complies with 175-26. I know that, um, Mr. Negrelli had already mentioned, um, about the three cars. So, um, do we know if this covers, um, more than 25% of the rear yard? Um, is it in the rear yard setback? Maybe it's not even in the rear yard setback.
It's in the side, side yard, right?
Okay, so we're okay on that. Um, is it more than 875 square feet?
Yes.
That's where they're seen, yeah.
Got it, okay. Um, and, um, are they more than, are they 10 feet from the sideline or no?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I think they're, yeah.
And upstairs was, again, it was just a family room, right? Not like an in-law apartment or anything?
Just one family room, one large room.
Okay.
So. So I guess I'm, I guess my question would be, why, um, why wouldn't this be a dimensional variance? If you're more than, if you're less than 10 feet from the, from side or rear lot line?
No, he's not, he's, he's not.
Oh, sorry, I thought he said he was.
No.
He is or isn't?
Okay.
He's not.
Okay, all right, then, thank, those were my only questions.
I mean, as Andy previously said, I, you know, it's a, it's a big property, it's a big house, and I don't, I don't see the garage expansion, really, in any way. It'd be in character with the neighborhood in the current house as, as it stands, in my opinion.
So I, I would make a motion, then, if nobody else has any questions, on the petition of Scott Williamson for a special permit under 175-26-C for an oversized garage at 238 Park Avenue. Property's located on Assessors Map Lot 32, Lot 14, in the R30 Zone, I would move that we approve for a special permit.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good luck, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the petition of 430 Plymouth Street.
Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 11th, 2021 at 7:15 PM via Zoom on the petition of 430 Plymouth Street Trust, Stephanie LaPointe trustee, 430 Plymouth Street, Abington, for a special permit under 175-32 for in-law apartment at 4th Plymouth Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 40, Lot 62, in the R30 Zone. Link will be posted on the agenda or email, andhurst@AbingtonMass.gov, Andrew Leverell, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to start, I can do so, Sean Riley again. Andy, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Sean, come on, I'm sorry about that, come on up.
All right, great. Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing the 430 Plymouth Street Trust, and Stephanie LaPointe trustee, Stephanie is on board with us tonight. This is a family house on Plymouth Street, that they're seeking the special permit to build an in-law in the rear portion of the existing house. Uh, if I may, I'd like to share my screen so I can show you a little bit more about, uh, what we've submitted, if that's all right? Okay. Uh, this is the, and the board has copies of this in their packages, but, uh, this is the assessors plan of the area, and the, and the lot in yellow is the subject property we're talking about. This is Plymouth Street heading north this way. This is Central Street, heading towards the town of Rockland over here, uh, just to get you acclimated where we are. The plan has been submitted, drawn up by Carl Garvey, dated January 6, 2011, for the proposed in-law addition. And the plan shows the existing home with a proposed in-law directly off the back. It shows that the in-law is less than 900 square feet, it's in our application material. It is less than 900 square feet under Section 175-32. There will be relatives living in each of the two housing units, actually brother and sister. A lot coverage, there's no issues there, uh, it's less than 25%. It's not in the floodplain overlay, and it conforms to all the R30 setbacks, so, it, on its face, it conforms in all regard, uh, to the required for the special permit for the in-law apartment. The floor plan was also submitted to you to just show that it is connected, uh, to the main house and also has its own egress. And there's already plenty of existing parking, uh, in the, um, on the property as it is now. So, with that, um, we would request a special permit, unless there's any questions from the board or any, uh, interested about her. I think it's a pretty straightforward application.
And the garage is being removed and nothing's being put there?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know, anyone else on the board, have any?
I don't have any questions, Andrew.
And I'm Sean, I'm sure you made them aware that they need to file a yearly affidavit to say that they have an in-law, or a relative living in the apartment, and if, for some reason, a relative should move, they can't rent it or anything like that.
That's correct, we, I have reviewed that with the family, and they are completely aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Is there, oh. Is there, oh, anyone else on the board?
No.
Just, Mr. Chairman, is there an egress or another exit on the rear of the house, Sean, for this new addition? Or is it going to go through the house?
There's one that goes through the house, let me put it back up, let me see if I can get this rolling for you, sir. You, well, again, this would be the parking area over here, they would enter in here. There's a connection to the main house, and there's also another exit on the far side of the house.
All right, I, I, I just missed that, thank you very much, Sean.
No problem, sir, good question.
Nothing else from the board?
No.
Closes to the board, anyone in the audience, if you want to just put something in the chat room, if you're here on four thirty Plymouth Street? I'd seen nothing, closes to the floor, all right, members of the board? I would, you know, as Attorney Riley mentioned, these are usually fairly straightforward. Relatives's going to be living there, we obviously encourage the use of in-law residences in the town. You know, they're aware of the requirements for filing yearly affidavits and, and everything, so I don't have any issue with it.
It complies with the bylaw as far as.
Correct. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on the petition of, four thirty Plymouth Street Trust, Stephanie La Pointe trustee, for a special permit under one seventy-five dash thirty-two for an in-law apartment at four thirty Plymouth Street, property is located on, assesses map forty lot sixty-two in the R thirty zone, I move that we approve the petition.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Good luck, thank you. All right, it's being after seven twenty, next up is the petition of Abington Investments LLC, two eighty-six Spruce Street.
Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at seven twenty P M via Zoom on the petition of Abington Investments LLC, two forty-five Central Street, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five dash twenty-one A four, for the construction of a seven-unit residential condominium at two eighty-six Spruce Street. The property is located on assesses map sixty-one, lot seven, in the R twenty zone. Link will be posted on the agenda or email andhurst@AbingtonMA.gov, Andrew Leveroff, Chairman of Zoning Board Appeals.
All right, could the petitioners on two eighty-six?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, question four on the application is not filled out. Uh, we don't know why you do that, because everything should be filled out correctly, correct?
That, Mr. Negreli, what's the question?
Well, your application, number four isn't checked off.
Well, are there any easements rights away or property restrictions which would cover or benefit the property? Sorry, I didn't check the no box, I think that's easily curable by me answering it at the hearing.
Uh, is that true, Nate? Amy?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just trying to get organized with the Zoom software right now, if you could bear with me for one second, so that I can share documents with you, I just have to get them in the right order and delete the ones that I just used in the prior hearing. Apologize for the delay.
And Attorney Riley, I had initial, I read your presentation beforehand, and I initial question, I don't know if it's just typical from misconstruing it, I don't want to, sort of disjoint your presentation, but on the, on the assigned parking spaces, is that supposed to be two parking spaces per unit?
There are, yes, there's a garage, which is assigned to each unit, and then there's one, they're required to have a second one and then half of a guest space.
Okay, that's what I, when I read it, it just said, each resident will have two bedrooms, a garage parking space, and assigned, okay. Gotcha. I just want a clarification on that.
Yeah, I know, I'll try to get into more detail with you in just a sec, I think I got the order, I apologize. All right, if I may, again, I'll try to share these documents at this point, so we can kind of go through the presentation, it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman? All right, let's make sure I do it right then. One second, yeah, okay. All right, so you can all see the, the assessors plan, again, for this property. But again, Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street. Someone's got a microphone on, that's giving us some feedback. I am, the reason I'm wearing a mask, this is, I'm here with the La Points here in my office, I'm representing the owners of the property, and this is the property in question, two eighty-six Spruce Street. As you can see, Spruce Street runs here, easterly direction towards the, towards Rockland. This is a paper street, Roslyn Street, and out to the rear is the former Naval Air Station property, just so we're all acclimated as to where we are. The, the project description, I'd like to go over it. Your faces. The applicant owns the land situated on the northerly side of Spruce Street, which contains sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifteen square feet or one point four three acres. The lot situated within the residential R twenty zoning district and is bounded on the rear by the former Naval Air Station property, and on the west by an unconstructed paper street called Roslyn Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a seven-unit townhouse building at the rear of the lot, all improvements will be situated entirely within the owner's property. The paper street is not being utilized or altered and will remain as an added buffer. There are no wetlands on the lot, the land's not located within the town's floodplain and wetlands protection overlay district. The bulk of the lot was previously cleared of trees by the prior owners, and the old house detached garage buildings were recently razed and removed. The original house was situated approximately fifty feet off of Spruce Street, and their proposed new residences be constructed over three hundred feet off Spruce Street. Initial designs contemplated two or three buildings closer to the street into abutting Spruce Street homes, but the submitted proposal is intended to create a secluded private residential building enhanced by significant landscape buffers, such that this building will not be visible from Spruce Street. Each residence will have two bedrooms, a garage parking space, and an assigned paved parking space. Additional guest parking spaces are also provided in conformance with our zoning by law. Although moving a building back farther from Spruce Street will increase the cost of extended utility lines and a longer private driveway, the benefits of utilizing the additional space for large landscape areas and privacy buffers was thought to outweigh the additional construction costs. The proposed residential use is allowed by special permit pursuant to one seventy-five twenty-one A. The site plan conforms to all setback requirements, lot area and parking requirements. The units will all be connected to town water and serviced by an onsite septic system. Typical residential lighting will be utilized, landscaping details have been provided, the drainage system has been designed by the applicant's professional engineer and reviewed by the town's consulting engineer. The submitted site plans and traffic assessment report clearly demonstrates that the requested use will not overload any, any public water sewer or drainage system, will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair sightlines or traffic or hinder pedestrian safety, nor would the proposed use create any hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Having satisfied all of the prerequisites for the special permit, the applicant respectfully requests that the zoning board vote to approve the requested special permit under one seventy-five twenty-one A. We look forward to your meeting, so that way, I mean, we may review our proposed project with your board. I should say, and I apologize, that also online with us tonight are two people from our engineering group, Strongpoint Engineering Solutions, Eric Diaz and Stephanie Hoben, who will be available for any engineering questions. Just to give you a little background on how we got here and some of the thought processes. This plan here kind of demonstrates some of the first designs, initial designs. Initially, we were looking at kind of a, a building with a little bend in it. All of these options that I'm about to show you conform to setback requirements under the R twenty zoning district. So we had an eight-unit building shown here, we had just a single nine-unit building this way, then we looked at proposal of having maybe two-unit buildings, and you could fit one here, another one here, and obviously a third, fourth, fifth, even potentially a sixth one, depending on enough parking and other requirements. So, there were various different options that we looked at for the property. But what we, the best answer for all of the different issues surrounding this property was to build a single building three hundred feet back off of the street in this approximate area. And again, this is Spruce Street heading east towards Rockland, this is part of the airbase land, this is up here is all airbase land. This is Mr. Keating's house, his driveway is over here and it comes through the trees into his house, as you can see, he's approximately three hundred feet back also. And then here are the houses on Spruce Street, again, in the section of Spruce Street heading towards Rockland. So submitted to the planning board and to the zoning board is the site plan set prepared by Strongpoint Engineering, a very detailed set of plans that have been reviewed by the planning board and by the town's review consulting engineer. Just quickly to go through, to show you, you have copies of this in your, in your package, is the existing condition plan, sorry, this is the existing conditions plan that shows where the old house was and the topography and the paper road. Going to the next sheet has a layout plan, which we'll get into more detail with you. And a utility plan, and then here is one that also includes the landscaping, and I wanted to note some of the improvements and additions that we have included in our site plan as part of the site plan review, which is, which has been approved by the town engineer and the planning board. Namely, a set of mailboxes which put, pulled off of the street onto the property in an area where the post officer can pull over and then just turn around and leave the property, or residents can return home from work and pull over and grab their mail. These are typically required in any new subdivision or any condominium, so this is, we thought was a great location, the planning board approved. The dumpster was originally on this side of the property, but Mr. Keating's house is over in this area, he asked that we move it over in this area, which was done in the revised plan, so now the dumpster is on the far right side of the property, this is just open forest land on this side. The fire department asked us to bring a hydrant onto the property, this hydrant's on the street, but he asked us to invest in putting a hydrant on property, not just for the benefit of our property, because these buildings are sprinkled, but he tries to take advantage of situations where we can put a hydrant off the road, so if there was another fire in the area, whether it's Mr. Keating's house or a forest fire or one of the houses on Spruce Street, there is another hydrant now available, and that is the location of the hydrant in this area.
And the fire department signed off on that in terms of accessibility to get the trucks in there and everything like that, no issues?
I, I have something to show you, to, to display that also, the fire chief has been, has been great to work with, he put these, takes a lot of time with, not just, just project, but every project. You may know he reviews things and has comments and suggestions. So, this is a tree-lined private driveway, it's not a public road, it's a private driveway, and you can see as you enter in, the traffic would one-way veer to the right. There would be a garage space for each unit, a parking space in front of each garage, and then these are guest parking spaces here and here, we actually have more than required by the zoning by law. And we have a lot of extensive landscaping, so essentially, when you're driving down Spruce Street, you really are not going to have a, a view of this building, number one, because it's a football field in length off of the road, and we also take advantage of this island to create a nice attractive landscape buffer, which is a site buffer, but is also aesthetically is a nice look, and we're planting a row of trees down here for a tree-lined roadway, and this is all grass, open space, and a backyard area, this area is cleared to the fence, so it's about thirty-five to seventy foot deep of a backyard area for the residents themselves. Moving forward, the plans, it also includes very specific engineering details, which have been reviewed again by the town, town engineer, and he has reviewed and approved all the construction details in the plan. The, I wanted to take a minute to also explain drainage issues. This is the existing conditions of the property. These lines represent topography lines, and as they get closer together here, it means there's a slope downward. So, when it rains, any water that's not absorbed by the ground flows in this direction, downhill, obviously, towards the back of the Korea property and the Akabuchi property, and some of it flows out to Spruce Street under current conditions. We are.
Where's the septic, is the septic tank, leaching field, where, where is that going to be designed?
That's going to be right, right in front of the building.
So, so the, the flow is going, any, anything coming from the septic tank will be going, where the arrows go, correct?
No.
Anything that's drained out of the septic?
No, that's, that's not correct, this, this is a, this is an existing condition plan with no septic system. This is the proposed plan, which would have a septic system, but would also have underground drainage. So, any rainwater that falls onto the roofs of these buildings would be collected, and instead of just with gutters onto the ground, they would be collected and piped underground, this is an underground, this blue line is an underground pipe that all of the roof line is connected to, so collects the, the roof water and brings it down this underground drainpipe into this infiltration area. Similarly, any rainwater that falls on the pavement would be collected and would be brought this way to the catch basin here, into the infiltration. And any rainwater that fell on the pavement in this area would be directed to this catch basin and brought into the infiltration area. So all the water that was flowing across our property onto the Yakabuchi and Korea is being significantly reduced now and gathered, redirected, and deposited onto our property where it infiltrates back into the water table. A much better design, a benefit to our neighbors, and again, Strongpoint Engineering is here to answer any specific questions. It also reduces the amount of water that's currently flowing out to Spruce Street on the heaviest of storms.
And where does the septic leach off to?
This, leach is into the ground.
Leach is off where though? Down to the ground or out into the dirt in front of it? Where's the leaching field go? That's the question.
Right in this area here, so it's underground, like any other septic system.
Yep.
There's a distribution box and an underground septic, leaching system, so any water would reach into the ground, much like rainwater would do, like.
And what, end up in this drainage area right there?
No, it goes into the ground, right where it's situated. I don't know how else to answer the question.
Well, I'm just saying, leaching fields, they leach, you know, the sediment comes out, just wondering where it's going, if it's going left, right, or into that hole right there?
Leaching, I go down. If I could just continue, this is a copy of the Strongpoint Engineering Solutions.
No, we answered the question.
I'm sorry?
I think someone said answer the question, I don't know what the, who's talking?
Should I proceed?
Thought I was muted.
All right, if you, if you don't mind, I'll continue. A copy of Strongpoint Engineering Solutions Drainage Report, the drainage calculations pursuant to D E P standards, it's a hundred and one day report that has been submitted, again, to the town, to the planning board, I'm not going to go through it for you, but it basically, essentially, I gave you a summary showing you where the water is being redirected, collected, all in accordance with D E P Stormwater Management System standards, I'm sorry. We will submit a copy of this as zoning board, if they'd like one, but take, I think the board can take notice, it has been submitted to the planning board and reviewed by the town engineer and approved by the town engineer. Moving on.
John, can I just interrupt you on, the, the collection basin, is that exposed? That collects, with the, yes?
Yes, yes, it is, it's, there's a fence between the Korea property and ours, and there's a fence along the roadway.
How deep is that on, or collection basin?
I'll have to ask Mr. Diaz to answer that question for you, if Eric Diaz can be unmuted, that might be helpful.
Sure, I could ask the question, why do you have a septic system there and not? I talked to neighbors and they're all on sewage, why are you not on sewage?
The easy, the, the answer is, this part of town, the muster field, is actually connected to the Rockland sewer system. It does not go to the Brockton sewer system, where about ninety percent of the town goes to. We did have a meeting with the Rockland Sewer Commissioners and asked, you know, could we connect to the Rockland sewer system? Because it's a joint system with Abington and Rockland, much like Abington and Brockton. Rockland wanted us to, they said, sure, you can do that, but would you please pay to, to fix the pumping station or replace the pumping station in Rockland down close to the Salem? Down close to Salem Street. And it was going to cost approximately seventy five to a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And frankly, it just, mamas don't work. It's not worth it. So you should know that a septic system for a condominium, whether it's two units or seven units. Is, has to be approved by the Board of Health and it's required under Title V, unlike homeowners. It has to be inspected every two to three years, so that it's always up to date and there's no issues. Because any unit owner should be able to sell their property, refinance their property and know that the septic system is working fine. I also should note to you, for those of you who are very familiar with the town and the muster field, the muster field is known to have the best draining soil in the town. Unlike Hancock Street has a lot of clay in the soil, the muster field is not. So a lot of houses in the muster field are still on, not a lot, some, several are still on septic systems because they don't fail. It is often here because of the great draining soil. Eric, are you online yet?
I am, yes.
Eric Diaz is the principal of Strong Point Engineering. I think the question was, you could describe a little bit more about the infiltration area here.
Is, so the infiltration basin has a bottom elevation of one thirty five and a top elevation of one thirty nine. So it is four feet deep. That includes a foot of freeboard, however, and that means that there is a foot between the maximum ponding elevation. In a hundred year storm event in the top of the basin, and that foot is designed just to provide some protection from any potential overtopping. So the basin is four feet deep with a maximum ponding depth in a hundred year storm event of three feet.
If you notice, it's not a drop off to four feet, it's a slope. It goes down like some of, some of the other older ones are designed to kind of drop off. This one slopes down.
So it's, they, it smokes at a three to one side slope and we use a three to one side slope to ensure stability of the soils and that the vegetation can take root.
And then Eric, if that were to fill up with water, you know, have, you know, a good storm, what's it designed to drain and how long?
So this is designed, first of all, it's designed so that all of the. The peak flow rates and volumes leaving the site are actually reduced in the proposed condition. If this thing was to ever fill up, the requirement is that it has a drawdown depth of less than seventy two hours, so less than three days. The very, very good soil conditions out there. I think this basin drains completely in less than twelve hours.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, just before you go any further, out of curiosity, what, what neighbors did Mrs. Nigraley talk to about this?
Oh, Mr. Nigraley, I don't know if you heard the question Glenn Lapointe Junior was asking. You mentioned that you had talked to a few neighbors about. The septic system questions and he was asking which neighbors you were talking to.
I didn't really catch the name. They were just a second house over. That's all. The people who, actually the people who are going to be able to see the project. And I did, I did ask, you know. Who was on sewage because sewage does run through there. And they did say that maybe a few of them across the street still had septic. But Sean, this is not part of the French drain watershed area? The French stream, excuse me?
I, I don't know. What's, what?
The French drain, the French.
French stream you're probably talking about?
Yeah, the French stream. How close to French stream is this? I know there's, there is a watershed area in that area.
We are not in the flood plain. We don't have any wetlands on this property. It's not an issue for this project.
I mean, there is no environmental impact study on this, right?
No, there's none required. So if I could move on, the, the Strong Point Engineering Drainage Calculations in accordance with D E P Drainage Stormwater Standards has been submitted and has been reviewed and approved. By the town's engineer. This, getting back to what Chairman Leveralt had asked, we also hired our engineers to document the fact that Abington's longest fire apparatus, which is their tower truck. Everything was designed so that it has maneuverability to go in and around the property.
That, Sean, excuse me for a minute, but that, that is a problem because NFPA eighteen two, three, four, one, one. States that, that the width has to be twenty feet and this is sixteen, isn't it?
It is sixteen feet only in this area right here.
Well, I think the fire chief should take a look at this because your driveway, you call it, is a, is a fire access. Any type of access road or access for the fire trucks. They require a twenty foot wi- wide driveway. Especially in a turnaround area. So I really think you should probably talk to Mr. Nellol about this because. You only have sixteen feet, I see. I'm using my magnifying glass because I really can't see the project here too well. But, sixteen feet.
Mr. Nigraley, the original plan that was submitted to the planning board had a twelve foot wide driveway access in that area. The fire chief asked us to increase it to fifteen or sixteen feet, which we did. So the fire chief has reviewed this.
Well, according to NFPA, it's supposed to be twenty feet, twenty feet.
To the, the public safety official in Abington, he wanted sixteen feet and according to this engineer's drawing, it does conform. He was actually more concerned with the ambulance and as I was about to say, the ambulance is the widest vehicle they own. And so he was, he appreciated the fact that we had extra onsite parking. And the reason for that is in the past, those that don't have an ex- extra off, offsite or off street parking. People tend to park where they want to if the other spots are full. And so by providing more than that is required, it makes sure that the driveway aisles will be, will be clear. And he did appreciate that. And as I said, we also, a hydrant was once over on the right side. And then we reviewed it with him to allow, he got his approval to move it on to the left side. So this has been reviewed by the fire chief. The fire chief did ask the planning board to consider to remove all of the landscaping and just pave the entire area here. But the planning board thought that that was not desirable, nor did we. And we think that this is a more attractive and user friendly place to live and it also provides a buffer for our neighbors. So if I may proceed. We also received a copy today and I'll forward a copy unless the planning board has already done so to Mrs. Ferris, the secretary for the zoning board. They issued the site plan approval letter to document that the plan that the board has in front of you. Has been reviewed and approved by the planning board and its consulting engineer. So that was a great first step. Although not required, we also went out and hired a professional traffic engineering consulting firm. To review the project because we anticipated some questions. We had talked to some of the neighbors on our own. And McMahon and Associates provided and submitted this traffic memorandum to the, again, to the town engineer and to the town planning board. And we've also submitted it to the town's zoning board. McMahon has been in business since nineteen seventy six. They have fifteen offices in the East Coast. They're a very reputable traffic engineering company. Part of their report, I'll go through it quickly, again, has a visual of where the site's located. This is Salem Street heading into Rockland. Towards, sorry, it's the Spruce Street heading into Rockland and then Salem Street and Rockland over here. Going down, they did a traffic count where they put the, the automatic traffic recorder out on this Spruce Street. Did a count in the month of January. But they also recognized that the month of January is typically a little bit less of a traffic month than some of the other months. So they adjusted the actual data count upwards. The traffic volume data was increased by a factor of one point oh one to reflect an average month condition. They also noted that, as we all know, COVID nineteen has also suppressed traffic. So they took the actual count from January. They added the month factor and then they also added on top of that a factor to adjust for COVID and increased. The, the numbers again by another factor of one point two percent, one point two oh. That is to be as conservative as possible. And they also looked at the, the rush hours, which are eight to nine in the morning and four fifteen to five fifteen. They usually base their reports on those two hours because those are the two busiest hours. Obviously, the other twenty two hours of the day have less traffic, but we look at the worst case scenario using the most conservative data. They looked at the safety issues, looked at actual traffic records that were available. The most recent accident records for the five year period was for two thirteen to two, two thousand seventeen. Over that period, there were no reported crashes on Spruce Street in the vicinity of this proposed site driveway, which is good news. They then expanded their look and they looked out as far as Salem Street and then into, over towards E Street, Art Street. Noticed there was four accidents in five years in that entire area, two of which were property act only, which means someone hit a mailbox or a telephone pole or something. And the calculated segment crash rate is two point five one crashes per million vehicle miles traveled, which is lower than Mass DOT's statewide rate. The Institution of Transportation Engineers have a trip generation manual. And based on that information, which is used countrywide, statewide with all sorts of projects. Based on the fact that it's only seven units with only two bedrooms. During the rush hour in the morning, they anticipate having three vehicles leave during that one hour period on an average weekday morning rush hour. And also three to return in that average weekday afternoon rush hour. As shown in the table, the proposed residential development is, is expect, estimated to result in approximately four new vehicle trips. One entering, three exiting during the weekday morning and approximately five new vehicle trips, three entering, two exiting during the afternoon. Based on that estimate, the increase is two point nine percent for daily trip travel on Spruce Street. So less than three percent of it, of an effect on the existing traffic. And then also they looked at site distance for safety. We're lucky here that this area of town is very flat. And Spruce Street is very straight. Those are two good things as far as traffic safety goes. And it shows that they recommend looking left and looking right. You should have at least two hundred and seventy or three hundred and fifty feet or two hundred and eighty and four hundred and twenty feet if looking right. We have over five hundred feet in each direction. So if someone's pulling out, you can see five hundred feet to your left. Greater than five hundred feet and five hundred feet to your right. So another safety issue was cleared. Above and beyond the minimum requirements of professional traffic standards. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they also looked at how many parking spaces should be required. They require the, the I T E suggests with seven units of two bedrooms, we should have at least twelve parking spaces. The town of Abington says that we should have at least fourteen, seventeen. We are providing, as I mentioned, twenty one. So we again exceed that standard.
So the, can you go? Can you go back to table two real quick? So it's seven units each with two bedrooms and they're saying that there's only going to be a total of four AM trips and five PM trips.
During, during, during the rush hour. Which is worse though. So, you know, because not everybody, not all seven people or people, not all seven units go to work during eight to nine. Some people don't go to work. Some people go to work at six. And it's the same thing for every house on, on Spruce Street right now. Not everybody pulls out of their driveway between eight and nine and comes back between four fifteen, it's spread out through the day. But we're looking at the worst hour of the day in the morning and the worst hour of the day in the afternoon. So you can see, so we can tell you that after nine o'clock, you don't have three people pulling out of that driveway. In fact, they've already gone to work. You're going to have much less traffic between the hours of nine to four fifteen and the same thing from five fifteen overnight. That's true throughout town. Rush hour is always the worst hours. So we show you the worst.
That's just that eight to nine block?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the four to five, you said?
Yeah, four fifteen to five fifteen.
Okay.
Afternoon rush hour.
Okay, thank you.
So the conclusion, just to summarize it, based on the review of the proposed project, an estimate of vehicle trips to the site will result in an increase of approximately three percent of the average daily traffic of Spruce Street. So to put that another way, for every hundred cars that might drive down the street in a given hour or two hours, we are adding three cars to that hundred. Our review of Mass DOT records indicates no crashes occurred within the vicinity of the proposed site driveway. Between two thousand thirteen and two thousand seventeen, which are the most recent records. Based on ASHCO guidelines, adequate site distance is available looking right along Spruce Street. Site distance looking left would exceed ASHCO guidelines if the existing shrub located at the east end of the driveway site is trimmed, which I understand has been trimmed. The proposed twenty one parking spaces is sufficient based on the town of Abington bylaws. Again, it exceeds the town of Abington bylaws. And a review of the I T E peak parking demand. Based on a review of information contained within this assessment, the proposed residential development is not anticipated to have a significant impact on the safety and operations of Spruce Street or the surrounding roadway network. And it continues on with twenty two pages of data points that I won't bother to go through, but it has been submitted to the board for your review. We're also.
Oh, sure. Good.
Go ahead.
So what about snow removal?
Snow removal is handled onsite, paid for by the owners, not the town of Abington.
And are they going to have a site where they're going to put it or they're taking it out?
No, we have, we have plenty of room to move snow around in there and like any property, if there ever was a blizzard. Like we had, what was that, five years ago when we had a number of blizzards, you can always remove, remove snow. But this is private property, so the town has no obligations to remove snow on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't, you didn't mention, but I, I will, we did, we're very happy and lucky to have. Two of our neighbors who submitted letters to the board. I think you were.
We received copies of those, yes, correct. Thank you.
All right, if you don't, I'll go through them. And so this is from Tim and Brianna O'Connor, who is our immediate butter. To the left side of our proposed driveway. My wife and I live next door to the property at two eighty six Spruce Street and we have met and spoken with Mr. Glenn Lapointe on a few occasions. We have personally reviewed the submitted plans and we one hundred percent support the approval of this project. By removing the old house and, and building the new condominiums at the end of a long driveway, we believe it will be a great improvement to our area of Spruce Street. We have no concerns about water or traffic problems and we look forward to the new landscaping to be added next door to us. Please vote to approve the proposal submitted for two eighty six Spruce Street, very truly yours, Tim and Brianna O'Connor. And similarly, the Glenn has talked to the owners of the houses and the residents on the, the right side of our driveway, the careers. And their letters, we are writing to express our full support for the approval of the new condominium building to be built by Lapointe at two eighty six Spruce Street. My wife and I live immediately next door at three hundred Spruce Street and this proposed new building will be located behind our house, pushed far back off the street. We think it'll be a vast improvement to that property and to our property. We appreciate the fact that the plans call for a fence and the planting of evergreens. This project will look nice when it's completed and we have no objection. Please vote to approve this project. Again, Mr. and Mrs. Korea signed that and we thank them and appreciate their support. And I'd like to wrap up with this and then I do have some closing comments I'll do maybe after some more input from the neighbors and, and the, the board members. But, sorry, section one seventy five four in our zoning bylaw talks about the special permit. And some of the procedures of the special permit where a special permit can be granted by the Special Permit Granting Authority, the S P G A. And in this case, that's the zoning board. To authorize the use, which will not be allowed generally or without restrictions through any particular zoning district. By which of control is the number, area, location, relation to the neighborhood and other characteristics who cannot be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals order. Comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity or general welfare. A special permit is not a variance, but may include a variance of dimensional similar, similar requirement incidentals. Part B talks about in granting the special permit, the S P G A, the zoning board. Shall give due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent structure and uses and the district within which the same is located. The zoning board shall take into consideration the, of the following general conditions. Excuse me. So there are five general conditions in our zoning bylaw for the zoning board to consider. And the first one is, is the, is the requested use listed in the table of use regulations? As a special permit in the district for which the application is made? And the answer is yes. The proposed use is listed in the table use regulations under section one seventy five twenty one A, it's actually twenty one A four. As a special permit in the R twenty zoning district. We then move on to number two. You check to see if the requested use will not overload any public water sewer or drainage system or any other municipal system. Create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair sightlines or traffic or hinder pedestrian safety to such an extent that the requested use. Or developed use in the immediate areas or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, the general welfare. But no evidence presented at the planning board hearing and tonight, I don't expect there to be any hit at all to show that this proposal will overload public water sewer or drainage systems. It doesn't overload water. We can talk about water later. We have a meeting with the water department on Tuesday. It doesn't overload sewer. We're not using sewer. We will schedule a hearing with the Board of Health for the septic system design. And it doesn't overload drainage. In fact, as the engineer just testified and as the drainage calculations and the town engineer agrees. Our proposal actually improves drainage systems on that site. The twenty eight page traffic impact assessment report confirms no undue traffic congestion, which is the. The phrase that the board has to inquire undue traffic congestion. There is no undue traffic congestion. No impaired sightlines. We have over five hundred feet left and right. No hindrance to pedestrian safety and neither, neither the immediate area nor any area of town has been shown to be unduly subjected to hazards due to this project. Number three and four, number three asks if there's any special regulations for this use and the zoning bylaw does not set forth any special regulations for this proposed use. Number four says, this is a requested use is desirable for public convenience and welfare. The R twenty zoning district not only allows multifamily use on this property. But our zoning bylaws stated intent for the R twenty district is to encourage compact residential development within this zoning district. The actual name of the R twenty zoning district is the High Density Residential R twenty District. Additionally, these proposed townhouse residences are attractive starter homes. They're limited to two bedrooms each and they require no town services for trash, snow removal or street maintenance. So the town gets the benefit of the tax revenue, but does not have the increase of trash expenses, snow removal, street maintenance. It does not happen because this is. Expenses, snow removal, street maintenance. It does not happen because this is private property. Finally, the last, again, this is a section one thirty five twenty about the district's intent. I highlighted enlarged the first one on the list, High Density Residential R twenty. The intent of that district is to encourage compact residential development, not to allow it, but to encourage it. Finally, number five, any special permit granted by the SPGA. Which a lapse of substantial use of construction is not commenced within two years of the expiration date of the appeal period or within two years after any appeal. Actually, a recent amendment to the state law now provides a three year lapse period. That is more of a legal issue for after construction or as part of construction, but it is included on items one through five. So all five of those, I believe, we do address, we do address in detail. And I think the board can heavily rely on the on the review and the approval of the town's engineer. Knowing that our plan was drafted and prepared by a registered professional engineer and then reviewed. By the town's consulting registered professional engineer and both of the town approved all of the work. We spent a lot of time with the planning board to try to improve the site in many different ways. We also listened to the neighbors as the letters show, we've talked to some of our neighbors. I mentioned before that we moved the dumpster upon Mister Keating's request, which I thought was a great idea, was remove that to the far side of the property. He asked that we provide a privacy fence along the where his house is on our, the fence would be on our property. He asked us it to be a eight foot fence. Typically, the zoning bylaw requires a six foot fence. He asked for eight. We have no problems with that. As I mentioned, the fire department had asked us to put a hydrant on the site, which we did, and the location has been approved by the fire chief. And we've added a substantial number of ever evergreens and targeted locations to act as additional buffers. And to benefit, there are already forested areas on two of the the four sides. And we're not touching Roslin Street, so that itself is a forty foot wide buffer that we will not be using and will leave that in its current status. So a lot of information, but. I and I know some of the residents have heard a lot of that information already before. But it is a well thought out project. We spent a lot of detail talking with the planning board, the neighbors. We look forward to any questions you might have, and I, as I said, I do have some more information or summary I'd like to propose. At the end of, towards the end of the meeting, when the time is appropriate, Mister Chairman.
I had an additional question. You said that you were meeting with the border health for septic. They hadn't approved of it yet.
Yeah, we don't, we normally wouldn't. The border health meeting would probably one of the last things we would do. That you have a any septic system, whether it's one family, commercial or condominium. The septic system designed by an engineer gets submitted to the border health for review and approval. And then upon that, they would sign off on a building permit.
We adopted regulations at our what January meeting that requires a signed approval from the border health for any septic systems. With the application. So we'd probably have to be conditioned on obviously the border health accepting or approving of the the septic.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. Typically, you know, the 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 plans, if the zoning board approves it tonight, it's still subject to the water department has jurisdiction over the water. The sewer department usually has a decision to make over sewer, but in this case, it's the board of health over septic. The building department has to make decisions to review the building plan. So there's a there's still other permits that have to be obtained.
Anybody else on the board?
Sean, you you mentioned that the fire department did review the plans and and there's egress available for all four sides of the building for the fire department to get equipment to if they had to.
The fire department has reviewed this in its entirety. When we file with the plane, but we filed eighteen sets of these plans. And they go to the various different departments. And the fire chief submitted his his comments and suggestions at both hearings. That we had with the planning board and I also personally spoke to him. I believe Glenn also spoke to him too.
Okay.
Chief Nuttall is, I have to give him credit and he's not online, so I can say this. He's very forward thinking and he does pay attention to detail. We appreciate that because it's good. To do that while things are paper and pencil. And not when things are already in the ground. So we appreciate the time he spends on these plans.
We just go back to the detention basin again. What what's the the plan for in? Closing that in or fencing it in or?
Yep. There is a, it's that's another interesting discussion we have in different towns. Some towns have a policy where they like to fence them in. And other towns have a policy where they don't like to fence them in. Some fire departments would rather not have a fence that they have to work around. Some fire departments or towns would rather have a fence. What we have proposed and what and how it's been approved is there is a solid fence between the Korea property and our property and that lot line. And then the remaining sides are going to be, I believe it was split rail fence along the other three sides. It would be setback off of the street. But it would be, so it would be kind of a nice kind of country-ish look to it, but it would still provide a barrier between. The the infiltration base.
How far off the street?
How far off the street? Let me see if I can get to that for you if I share that screen again. Yeah, if Eric can answer before I get there, go right ahead, Eric, but it's one of those questions.
The front of the detention basin, the closest point to the street is about fifteen, roughly fifteen feet off of the street line. With another probably seven or eight feet to the the edge of pavement. So you're talking about probably right around. Twenty feet from the edge of the paved way of the street to the start of the detention basin.
And then you're gonna have a split rail fence in front of that. Is that?
And that's correct. There'll be a split rail fence between the basin and the in the street. Split rail fence is probably about three feet off of the top of the basin.
And line of the butter, you're going to put a, what kind of fence is that going to be?
That is proposed to be a six foot white wooden privacy fence between the butter and the in the basin. So you won't. Be able to see through that fence, whereas the other three sides, you just be a split rail that you can't see through.
And how how close is the basin to his property?
About twelve feet off the edge of his property.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Amy, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I do just one quick. I just have a couple of quick questions. The this, is there a reason why everyone else is on sewer, but you're using septic?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Amy. Maybe you didn't hear the question earlier that came up. It's because
Sorry.
No, it's quite all right. The because it's a joint system, Abington and Rockland. We have to get the approval from Rockland, the the actual treatment plants in Rockland. So we have to get approval from Abington and Rockland to connect. That's true with single family homes. The single family homes are usually not an issue, but we went to the Rockland Sewer Commission. And. How can I say this politely? They said, sure, we'll let you connect, but we want to put a condition on it. Sure, what's your condition? We want you to replace the seventy five to a hundred thousand dollar.
I did hear that. I'm sorry. I I didn't understand that that had that that was the condition of the septic. I'm sorry about that.
I don't blame the trial and don't blame it for asking, but it just didn't make any sense.
Right. And then I I did have a question about the the eight foot fence. It's my understanding that a seven foot fence is now allowed under the state building code. So I I'm wondering about how we how we permit an eight foot fence. I think it's a great idea because the butters want that. But has I I'm just, I'm just, has has anyone thought about that?
It it just, it came up during the last planning board meeting. This actually was a discussion when they were reading their conditions because it was the thought about whether it was a six foot fence or an eight foot fence or what could you do? And actually, one of the members was a prior building inspector and he suggested that we go with the eight. And I believe Mister Keating, who I know is online, he can answer that for us later. I believe he requested the eight foot fence or would like the tallest fence possible. We'll build whatever.
Right. So I I I think that and and the planning board, the planning board, that's on the plans that the planning board approved?
It's in the condition on the on the letter.
Okay.
We had a vegetated buffer and Mister Keating asked us for to add a fence to that.
So so I I think that the zoning board might want to, if the special permit is allowed. I think that this the planning board, I mean, the zoning board. Might want to. Just specifically allow an eight foot fence because in that way, when you get to the building department. The building department is aware that both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals were okay with an eight foot fence. I guess my concern, Sean, is that or Mr. Attorney Riley, is that. I think an eight foot fence all of a sudden becomes a structure and we're looking at setback issues. So I think if we have approval from both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, specific approval. We might not run into that issue.
Good thought.
And. And oh, the only other question I had, and I think I missed it when you put it up on the screen, was even though you are three hundred feet back from. The street, you do meet the rear setback?
We do.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The rear setback is thirty odd minimum, sorry, thirty feet minimum.
Yeah.
At its highest point, it's thirty five feet and it expands to about seventy feet.
So that was my question. So 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 not only do you meet the thirty five feet, but there's also additional.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Those were my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Not right now, but I may have some. I'd like to hear what the
All right, why don't we open it up to the floor and I clearly a lot of people who want to speak, so maybe we could unmute people in some type of orderly fashion.
If I could just ask Mister Chairman, make sure that anyone who's going to speak would state their name and their address for the record, because I think we do have to keep a public record.
Okay.
One at a time. Yeah. Yeah. Mister Keating?
Yes.
Okay. Mister Keating, could you just give your, obviously, your name and your address?
Absolutely. Hello, my name is Kevin Keating. I am at two seventy two Spruce Street. I am a direct abiding neighbor on the left hand side of the proposed subdivision. This neighborhood right now is almost a single family homes. Two eighty six Spruce Street where the subdivision is planned is zoned R twenty. The subdivision plan that is proposed is completely nonconforming to the zoning rules. It would change the whole simplicity of the neighborhood so the developer could make an extreme amount of money. The maximum land cover on R twenty is twenty percent. This proposed plan puts the land cover at thirty five percent, which is totally nonconforming. This purpose of this hearing tonight is so that the developer can try and obtain a special permit. To override the zoning rules, but this plan would not comply with the intent of zoning bylaws. There was one house on that property. To make the to make a more community friendly development. Plan, we would like to see two houses on that lot instead of the seven townhouses. Which are planned in the subdivision plan. And Mister LaPointe could still make himself a much needed reasonable profit on that land. As far as that traffic study goes that Mister Riley just announced. It certainly sounds like this is going to be a senior citizens complex and it is not. Seven units, three cars in, three cars out, maybe in COVID times and regular times. That's not the case. Everybody knows that. A a couple of other things. One. If my well gets contaminated, which is a far enough distance away from his septic system by law. If it gets contaminated from the new septic system, who is responsible? To correct the contamination into my well, should this happen? That was brought up on the planning board hearing. It was never answered. As far as the setback from the street. Yes, I am setback three hundred feet from the street, but I am a ranch home. My house sits fourteen feet to the roof line off the ground. These seven unit. Units are going to be twenty eight to thirty something feet off the ground to the roof line. If you can't see that from the street, you're blind. He says he's going to put in landscaping. And artificial landscaping to mature takes ten to twenty years. What do we do in the meantime? So Mister Riley also said several neighbors in the neighborhood are for this plan. From what I can see, you had two letters. Those are the only people in the whole neighborhood that are for this plan. There's going to be several people at this hearing right now who are going to want to speak. Again, we all want to see Mister LaPointe. Have a reasonable profit, but not an extreme profit, which he would make by doing a seven lot subdivision, which. Absolutely one hundred percent does not belong in this neighborhood. Thank you for listening to me. I am done.
Thank you, sir.
You ready for the next one?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Nancy.
Okay. Adam Hobart. Adam Hobart.
Hello, everyone hear me okay?
Yes, could you just give your address for the record, please?
Sure. So my name is Adam Hobart. I'm representing two eighty five Spruce Street, which is directly across the street. Which is currently occupied by my grandmother, who is eighty eight years old, a widower. So I'm here representing her. You know, myself and my father. Are here is here as well, and he's going to be speaking a little bit. We've spoken. Quite a bit to my grandmother and I I just wanted to express some some public comments about this specifically. So you know, it's the same crew of folks that have been in the planning board committee. That have been here now, some of the neighbors and 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 local residents of the muster fields. You know, I'm going to try to echo some of the comments that I spoke to during the planning sessions here as well. You know, which is, there's, there's just an overarching concern. Of the look and feel of the neighborhood, right? My grandmother has lived in this house, I think, since like the end, the fifties or the sixties. And there has always been kind of a flavor and a style to the neighborhood. And something like this being built in that area just would not fit. One of the other concerns that I raised as well is that Spruce Street has no sidewalks. The type of clientele that would be looking to purchase these seven units are probably young professionals. Maybe couples looking to start a family. Maybe they have some kids. Maybe they already have some kids. And when those kids want to go out and play. It's either going to be the catch basin at the end of the road, or they're going to try to go to the nearest park, which is Arnold's Park. We all know Arnold's Park. So they will have to leave and then walk on the street all the way down to Arnold's Park, which is a hazard that is dangerous. You know, some of the people in the neighborhood all know Paul Jacobs. You know, I've spoken to him a few times about him in his wheelchair, going down to go on the train. You know, he's quite an independent individual, which I respect. And he's told me explicitly, it is dangerous. It is dangerous to do that. This is a risk that he needs to take, but it is very, very dangerous. So I, you know, echo those concerns. And then the overarching comment that I'll wrap up on is. You know, it's it's a really difficult position that the board has put in right now, which is, you know, a group of individuals. Who've lived in this neighborhood for a very, very long time, who have paid their fair due in taxes, who live in a town. Where folks get elected or appointed positions or volunteer their time to make decisions on the on the betterment of the community. And when the betterment of the community and the majority of the community of these taxpayers. Would like to see. Not this get built, but also not get in the way of, you know. The land of the free, which is his right to make a profit and and, you know, and build something and and. And do what he wants to do with his land. It's a very difficult position. That you guys are in. And I would like you to consider that when making your decision. And I yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rob Holbert. Rob Holbert is next.
Yes, hello, this is Rob Holbert. I'm representing 285. I'm the trustee. It's that property's known in trust. I believe you can hear me, correct?
Yes, correct. Thank you, sir.
I, I'm just, I'm not, not to beat a dead horse on a lot of things that were said. I'm gonna bring up a couple of other things, I think. I have a question. On the end of East Street, where the Calhoun property used to be, I have a question. Somebody maybe can answer. I've heard some things. My understanding is that, that end of East Street projects of new homes was also, was that also, somebody answered, was that a LaPointe project also? With those new homes on the end of East Street, where the Calhoun Oil Company used to be?
Mr. Riley?
Yes, at the end of East Street, there was contaminated area with Calhoun Oil used to be. Mr. Mr. LaPointe bought the property, paid $400,000 to clean up the property and then put in single-family homes in that area. On, on, he got a number of variances from the zoning board to allow that to proceed, because they were smaller lots than the 20,000 square feet, but he didn't, he paid for that effort to clean up that area.
Yeah, I used to play basketball down there. They had a court back there. That being said, was he not initially wanting to put condos in there, two-six-unit condos? I, my understanding, that was there originally. Was that his plan? Does anybody know? There were no condos first initiated there to be proposed? That was my understanding.
I think we should try to focus more on the, the, the property at issue rather than sort of
Okay, well, the, the point that I'm trying to make is, is if that was the case, and that was, was not allowed, why would it be allowed now at 286? If that is, if that is what I've heard, and that, that was his original proposal, and I heard this from neighbors, and, and it then was not accepted because of pretty much what we're saying. You're plopping seven units down on 1.43 acres. Those are seven families in 1.43 acres of, of property. I mean, I, 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 I think we can all see this, and you're talking about 21 spaces for cars? What, at, at any given time, all 21 could be occupied. That's what you're, that's what you're saying. You're allowing 21 spaces there. They could all have cars coming and going. I think if you just, 300 feet is not much. And I know the property. I grew up there. I think if you just all of a sudden picture what's proposed, propped right there on that little plot of land of only 1.43 acres, having seven families, I, I just don't see it fitting in, in with what, which, what we have there as from a neighborhood standpoint. And I asked at the planning board if anybody's done anything on property values and how they might be affected. I didn't get an answer. I don't know if that's gonna, should be considered. I, I don't know if that's a positive or a negative. I, I, I think there's been some, some strong concerns put forth that really should be considered. I, I commend the work that was done in trying to put this in, and why not? He would, he would do what he would want to do. And he seemed to have done it right in that regard, except that I just don't think it's what the musterfield needs. That's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Joseph Sypat is next.
Yeah, hi. I'm actually Rachel. Joseph's my husband. We live at 264 Spruce.
Could you just provide your last name?
Higgins.
Thank you.
And I'm also
I'm also with Julie Waldrop, 259 Spruce Street, Abington. And we just want to voice, it, it doesn't conform with the neighborhood. Mr. Riley can say all he wants to say with all the plans. It doesn't belong in this neighborhood. This is a residential street. There isn't even a two-family house on this street. There's two neighbors that approve of this, too. That's it. And those are the only two that Mr. LaPointe spoke to quite recently. So he hasn't approached my husband or I. And 21 more cars on this street. It's, it's a residential neighborhood. It doesn't conform with this street. He wants to build two beautiful houses? That's fine. It conforms with the neighborhood. What he's proposing doesn't belong here.
And I think Kevin, he said everything that I was gonna say also, and I would like to add to, I think it was Adam who said the traffic. I, we have three small children, and it is absolutely horrendous to walk down the street, to go to the park, go for a walk. It is so dangerous. So to add, you know, seven more small families, I think you, is, is very dangerous. No sidewalks, no streetlights. It's, it's just not gonna fit in this area. So, like I said, everything that Kevin said is exactly what I would have touched on.
Right on point for this neighborhood, right on point. So I, like, two, two single-family homes would be perfect, would fit right in with the rest of the neighborhood.
Seven units, I just can't, I just can't see it.
No. And, and the, you know, they're talking about the shrubs and the trees. And quite honestly, it was Mr. LaPointe that took all the trees down, and he took them down weeks ago. Sheila and Jimmy didn't take those trees down. So that's all we have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Laurie is next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you just provide your, your name and address?
My name is Laurie Edgerton, and I also live at 264 Spruce Street. And I just want to mention that if I'm sitting in my backyard, I have quite the expansive backyard. Nice fenced-in backyard, swing set for my kids, little pool in the corner. If he puts in seven townhouse units, there's gonna be fourteen or more windows that can look over and see me in my backyard. At 28 feet, can I get a 28-foot fence? So that I can have privacy in my backyard? It didn't dawn on me until I walked out to my backyard the other day, and I looked over. And I could always see the top floor of Sheila's house into the bedrooms, and I know that this proposed site is gonna be back a little bit. So that means every window in the front of that unit is gonna be able to look right into my backyard. And the traffic thing, I said this before, nobody's running their trucks anywhere. So, Shawlum and Mulch, anybody from Route 18 with their mulch trucks, it's COVID. Nobody's doing anything. When, when everything is running normal, there are more trucks going through Spruce Street to Salem Street from 18 over to the expressway. It's a cut-through. They all use it. They all go through. And I'm the one that's walking down the street with three children and two dogs, and I take up the whole street. Because that's the safest thing for me to do. And I've already had words with people in their vehicles about me being on the street. I understand Mr. LaPointe can't provide us with sidewalks. I would never ask him to undertake something that expensive. But I agree with everybody else. I don't understand why some homes can't go in there. Something more attractive than what this piece of paper shows. I mean, it's just in undercar, underground garages, is that correct? I don't know about over there, but at 264 Spruce Street, when we have a lot of water, it's in my basement. So what's gonna happen to the water that goes into those garages? Does that get pumped out and put in the basin? Or are we just assuming that the ground is gonna sot that up? I think that's all I, I have to say also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rich Little. Rich Little is next.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, could we just get your address, please?
Sure. My name is Rich Little. I live at 3 Plain Street in the musterfield. I've been there for 50 years, and during this time, not much construction has gone on in the musterfield, because frankly, there's not that much room left in the musterfield. I did not speak when the, when the Keely, the eight homes on Keely Circle went in. I did speak when the houses went in down at the intersection of Savine and East Street. And I, I keep hearing the same thing about traffic, and, and people are annoyed, you know? I'm annoyed. I'm annoyed that 22 times a day, the, the train happens to blow its horn when it goes by right by my house. I'm annoyed I don't have sidewalks on my street on Plain Street. Yes, I agree with the traffic. But this, this particular, what's gonna happen at 286 is not going to affect the traffic. We have a sign in the musterfield that says Route 58 with an arrow. I don't know who put the sign there, but those of us who live in the musterfield, we know where Route 58 is. We've been there. I've been there for 50 years and know where Route 58 is. That Route 58 sign is designed for traffic from other places. And I empathize with those people who are affected by traffic, but I don't think this project is, is going to affect the traffic. And if the, the buyer of this property is complying with the ordinances set forth by the town of Abington, I'm, I'm curious to what happens if he gets denied. I, I see appeal in the future, which is going to cost both him and the town of Abington litigation to have that if it goes further. And, and I just don't think that, I think we should take a good look at it and see what is in the best benefit for the town. And I can't see this stopping it. I know people are being annoyed, but I don't know if that's the purpose of the, of the zoning board, is to, to help mitigate annoyances. This property was bought. It was not anything underhanded. Anybody could have bought that. The neighbors could have bought it. The town could have bought it. Make a dog park out of it. Make, make sure you got plenty of room for parking, though. That's about all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity to, to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Who's next? Jessica.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Jessica Shishka. Live at 249 Spruce Street. It's a few houses down from the proposed development. Currently, our neighborhood is a single-family neighborhood of small to medium-sized homes. My home is 1,388 square feet. Those are the homes that pretty much are on that street. If you look at the area houses, you can see that the development does not conform to the current, excuse me, to the current musterfield area. I understand this is a business to develop properties, and we would be okay with compromising. Just the seven units does not conform. We would be okay with two, single-family, split-the-lot, just to kind of stick with the neighborhood. We do not have sidewalks, and to kind of reiterate what someone else said, we have neighbors that have mobility issues, that have wheelchairs. And again, we know that Mr. LaPointe can't put in sidewalks for us. But these are the issues that we have on our street that we are voicing to you. Also, to reiterate what Laurie said, every time it rains, I have water in my basement. So as much as people believe that it's a great drainage area of musterfield area, that is not true. I can show you video from the front of my house. The roads are full of water. There are flooding issues. So if the runoff to that basin is to the road, we're gonna have more water issues. I'm afraid this will affect our neighborhood. And I'm sure that the developer does not realize that. This is also a cut-through from Salem Street, and it's used by big trucks. And as Laurie said before, the trucks are not running right now. But I have video, and my cameras are set up for the road. We have trucks that barely stop at the end of the road. This will add traffic to this road and can cause a concern for the citizens that live there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Chris O'Neil.
Good evening, members of the board. I just, um, actually, everyone that spoke before me kind of was pretty eloquent on, on all of the, the issues. My issue is, Mr. Chairman, may I address Attorney Riley?
Yes, could you just provide your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris O'Neil, 52 Arch Street.
If you can raise any specific questions you want.
Attorney Riley, so I know that you said that there was 500 feet in each direction of site, leaving that driveway. You also stated that they were gonna be put up either a fence or a row of arborvitae's or any form of shrubbery through the lot lines. Is any of that going to impede sightline pulling onto the street?
No, the fence that runs along the street is setback off of the street. It's good, what, 15, 20 feet away off the street? And there's no arborvitae's being put, in fact, we're not allowed to put any solid fence or plantings that would block sightlines. And, and we have a bylaw also that restricts fences being too close to the road.
Thank you for the answer. I appreciate it. So like I said, I would just, I'd like to reiterate what kind of everyone that spoke before me said. I, I just don't think that, you know, a, a seven-unit condo building kind of fits with, you know, the neighborhood plan as it sits now. That's all I got. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Was that, was, was that it, Nancy?
I don't see anybody else.
Is there anybody else here who would like to speak? Just if you can put a message in the chat box. If not, I will close it to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm always inquisitive whether, I did say I'd like to speak after all, and try to sum up if I could. When you try to close it to the floor, I'm always concerned that you're closing it to me also, and I, I would
No, you can go ahead, yeah, if you have any, any additional comments.
Okay. First of all, I have to comment that I have to appreciate the tenor of these types of meetings, and I think Abington should be proud of themselves. The neighbors brought up some obviously sincere issues and points, and they did it in a very nice and direct way, whereas you hear horror stories in other towns where that's not the case. So we can always agree to disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable, and I just want to send a thank you to the board members and to the butters and to LaPoints for discussing things and not arguing about things. I appreciate that. If I could, just try to give you some additional information, and I want to clarify a few things. The, the question, one, just some small questions. There is no underground parking here. That's not correct. The, the garage is a regular garage at ground level, so there is no basement under the garage in the, in the parking. It's not set down. Water issues, I understand that there may be some houses with water issues. New construction, you're allowed, you're required to raise foundations a minimum of two feet above water table, so that we don't have those issues. And as our drainage report and site plan both can demonstrate, we are not gonna create or exacerbate any existing, we're not gonna exacerbate any existing water issues. We're not creating any new ones. We are putting in a stormwater management system where none exists whatsoever. So this project would actually improve drainage issues on our property and the properties immediately surrounding. Just so that's clear, and it's well documented in the plans in, in the, the town engineer's review of those plans. The trees, that lot was cleared, not by Mr. La Pointe. The land out back, you can see in the aerial picture I showed earlier, it was already well cleared. Mr. La Pointe recently took down a couple of pine trees that were behind the house in front of the cleared area out back. And he cleared out the scrub bus. The Navy owns, I keep saying the Navy, but the airbase properties right on the other side of the fence. But that's really not a big issue, but I did want to make sure that his reputation was saying, I'm sorry Glenn. The traffic, I understand it's always an issue with, a concern, rightfully so with parents on a street with no sidewalks. And they also said that it's not Glenn's responsibility to put sidewalks in and that's the case also. Excuse me. But our traffic study is a legitimate study documented, it's on the record. And there is not going to be any significant increase in traffic or traffic hazards that trigger a denial of a special permit. And I know that might be difficult to hear, but that is the case because someone mentioned how the zoning board has a difficult decision and I agree. The zoning board is always going to vote for someone and against someone. But they also have an obligation to protect my client's property rights and his right to develop. And as we've demonstrated, his proposal conforms in every single way to the bylaw. As far as setback regulations, we more than satisfy those. Parking, we more than satisfy that. Drainage, more than satisfy that. We, the use to be denied has to show that it's going to overload traffic. It doesn't, that it's going to overload water and it doesn't. And if I could share my screen, I'll try to be, present a more organized review of where we are. Excuse me. The submitted proposal for two eighty-six Spruce Street, the proposed use, which is the question tonight, does not overload the town water system. Two-bedroom townhouse condominiums are estimated by water department data to use approximately ninety to a hundred gallons per day for a two-bedroom townhouse. Compare that to a single-family house, which is allocated two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a day. So the townhouses use less water, they have less people living in them and they have obviously the brand-new water-efficient systems, the plumbing. The proposed use does not overload the town sewer system. In fact, there's no effect at all because we're using an onsite septic system in compliance with all DEP standards. The proposed use does not overload available off-street parking. We exceed resident, guest, resident and guest parking requirements. The proposed use does not overload local roads with undue traffic congestion. That is the threshold. Our twenty-eight-page professional traffic assessment report confirms no traffic hazards. Will there be an increase of cars on Spruce Street? Yes, but that's true, no matter what is built in this property, seven units will be more than two or three houses, potentially. It may be truthfully, but we're not going to have twenty-one cars parked there every day and every night. That's a fallacy. I understand the hypothetical nature of some of the questions, but that doesn't happen. These are based on tried and true manuals, ITE manuals that are used in every state for every type of project like this. And specifically, the numbers are chosen and allocated based on townhouse-style two-bedroom developments. The proposed use does not harm wetlands, because there are no wetlands on this lot. The proposed use does not create any light trespass onto abutting properties. The site will feature New England-style lampposts, which are dark sky compliant. The proposed use does not overload drainage. As we've mentioned a number of times, this proposal actually improves existing drainage conditions for this site and immediate abutters. The proposed use does not overload the site itself, sixty-two thousand two-hundred-and-fifteen square feet, one of the largest lots in all of the muster field. Mr. Keating has another large lot. The site plan sets the building back off the road to enhance privacy, not only for the existing Spruce Street homes, but also for the new residents. Provides plenty of parking, conforms again to all zoning setbacks, provides significant land-safed areas, provides open backyard areas where kids can play, they don't have to walk to Arnold Park. They've got a deep backyard for all its new residents. The proposed use does not have any negative effects on the appearance of the neighborhood or streetscape views because it's not on the street. The building is itself three hundred feet off the street and is screened by, as the town engineer described it, an attractive landscape island. The proposed use does not overload town maintenance responsibilities. The residents pay privately for all trash removal, pavement and driveway maintenance and all snow removal. If this was a public road, it'd be the opposite. The site design, the driveway and parking layout, the landscape details, the fencing and the vegetated buffers, the site lighting and all drainage improvements have been reviewed and approved by the town of Abington's consulting engineer. And I do want to also mention one thing as far as comparatively speaking, single-family homes versus the townhouses. The, as we mentioned, there'd be no tax dollars spent on plowing, trash disposal and there'd be very minimal school impact also with townhouses. You see that across the town. Some of the finance offices of the town and those in the tax departments compare two-bedroom townhouses as quote, "the next best thing to commercial development in town" because of the low impact tax revenue, but low cost to the town. For example, if the seven units are assessed at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is the approximate estimate of some of the other townhouse-style units in town, at a rate of seventeen dollars a thousand, it would generate six thousand dollars per unit or forty-two thousand dollars in tax revenue for the town. Compare that, if we took the sixty-two thousand square feet we had and cut it up into three twenty-thousand lots and built a new roadway, and we had three houses in there valued at four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, each of them would receive a tax bill of about seventy-eight hundred dollars or a total of twenty-three thousand dollars for the same property. So we'd get forty-two thousand dollars worth of income versus twenty-three thousand dollars worth of income to the town.
I don't think we can, we can't consider tax benefits to the town when we're considering these proposals, correct?
Sure, you can. General welfare and benefits, because the other, the other part of that equation is, okay, if there's income, what are expenses to the town? If we have three houses, they're typically, a new, a new house in Abington is going to be a four-bedroom house at a minimum. That's twelve bedrooms. Seven townhouses is fourteen bedrooms. The three houses have to be built on a roadway, not a private road, because you have to frontage on a new roadway. That means the town's going to plow that roadway. But for the townhouses, the condo unit owners pay for the plowing, not the town. For the new houses, the roadway, Abington pays for their trash pickup at the houses, but they don't pay for condominium trash pickup. With three, four-bedroom houses, three of those, each four-bedroom house is going to have three bedrooms filled with kids, which means those three houses will have, let's assume a hypothetical, nine kids. If we have seven condominium units with two bedrooms each, and if we assume mom and dad are in one bedroom and assume there's a kid in each bedroom, which we don't think there will be, but assume that they are, that's seven children for our proposal versus the nine children if there was three houses there. And then water, with seven units, we would use approximately ninety to a hundred gallons per day, so six-hundred-and-thirty to seven-hundred gallons per day. Whereas three houses are two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day or seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day, actually a little bit more water with towns, sorry, with houses than with townhouses. And the water increase that some people have mentioned online, I've heard, this property is already has water service coming to it. So it's already entitled to the two-hundred-and-fifty. So our increase, if we use the hundred gallons per, per unit, which is the high estimate, that means seven hundred gallons is needed, we're already entitled to two-fifty. So what we're going to the water board is for an extra four-hundred-and-fifty gallons. That's it, an extra four-hundred-and-fifty gallons. And a system that provides two-point-six million gallons per day, that is an increase of point zero-point-zero-zero-zero-one-six-eight-five. Or to put it another way, point zero-one-six percent. Not one percent, not half a percent, not point one percent, but zero-point-zero-one-six percent, or again, zero-point-zero-zero-zero-one-six-eight-five. A de minimis increase in traffic, a de minimis increase in water, no increase in sewer consumption, very negligible, if any increase in school population. It is well-designed and is not affecting the character. We firmly agree. In fact, the planning board is part of their approval mention. If this proposal of townhouses was be, was to be designed to be fifty feet off the road like all the other houses, that would break the character and the streetscape of the muster field in this area and we would agree. And that's why we did not propose that. I showed you earlier that we had considerations of having some, a couple of condominium unit buildings spread across with some of them right up on the street, fifty feet off the street. We did not want to do that. We're using the depth of this property to put the building three-hundred feet off the road. So when you drive down Spruce Street, you physically cannot see, you're not going to see that building setback unless you literally turn onto our property and go down the driveway. So it does not change the street, the streetscape of the property. I fully understand the concerns, something new like that in, in, in the muster field. I have friends who live in the muster field and maybe I've lost a few of this, but my clients do have a right to develop the property. In the R-twenty zone, it is intended, someone mentioned it's not the intent of this district. Exactly, it is the intent of this district to encourage multifamily housing. And we've done it in a way that complies, we need no variances whatsoever. We satisfied all of the portions of the special permit that we went over earlier and for the eleven items that I just mentioned. To summarize, my clients have gone to great lengths to address all of the concerns and requests brought to their attention, especially by their immediate abutters. At the request of a butter Keating, we've agreed to move the dumpster away from his lot line and install his requested eight-foot-tall privacy fence and the board agrees with that. We are also pleased to submit letters from the O'Connors and the Correas, our abutters to the immediate left and right of our lot on Spruce Street who support the approval of our requested special permit. In all respects, the proposed use and submitted plan satisfy the requirements of a special permit as previously outlined and required by the Abington zoning bylaw. The submitted site plan conforms to the site plan review requirements outlined in section one-seventy-five-seventy-seven and has been approved by the Abington Planning Board. And the proposed use of this property conforms to the R-twenty zoning district's stated intent in section one-seventy-five-twenty to encourage compact residential development in this district. For all the above reasons and pursuant to all the information presented to the board in our submitted materials, the grant of a special permit is warranted and justified in all respects. And we respectfully request that the board vote to approve the special permit. I greatly appreciate the input from the board and from the neighbors and I appreciate your time. I hope you will consider this affirmatively and trust that the points will build a quality project three-hundred feet off the road that will benefit this property and those around. Thank you.
Sean, I got a question for you. The planning board, one of the members turned this down, he said no from the vote because of the streetlights, sidewalks and the traffic report. Those are the three reasons he gave. He wasn't too satisfied with the traffic report. When I walked this property, I did see how close some of these houses were, especially the one in the back, to where the proposed buildings are. Would the Entertain taking one of these buildings out, oh, and make it a six-unit? For the points?
No, there's no need for that because we actually started with eight units. And in talking with the planning board and the neighbors, we dropped it down to seven to allow us to have more setback off of the property. And it would require a whole nother site plan review and a whole, whole nother set of hearings. There's no need to because we don't overload anything. We actually didn't overload it with eight units either, but we dropped it down to seven and also incorporated some of the other items that were requested.
Okay, I, I would just look at the property, when I, when I walked the property from the street, I mean, excuse me, from that, that road, it just seemed like the property seemed smaller than, than it really is, I guess.
Well, here's the plan, hopefully you can see this okay. It is three hundred feet off the road, three hundred and eight feet to be exact. This forty-foot strip is, is the paper street, it's undeveloped, so there's a forty-foot undeveloped buffer right there. These are approximate distances we measured out. From the Korea house, it's a hundred-and-seventy-five feet. You can see the trees here and we're planting trees on our property. From the honor house, it's approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five, hundred-and-thirty-five and two-hundred feet away. And there's no one out behind us or over here.
And right there, those are, you're a hundred feet away from the wetlands, is that what those lines are?
These lines, the wetlands are out here on the, on the neighboring property.
Okay.
What's the implication on the paper street? Who technically owns that? Is it the town?
No, it's actually owned half by.
On each side.
Exactly, right.
And what is the, what's the height of the building going to be at the garage level?
At the garage level? I'm sorry, what, the floor of the garage?
At the top of the garage?
What's the height of the building?
Like the ceiling of the garage perhaps?
From the, from the ground to the top of the roof.
To the top of the roof? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you Andy.
Yeah, from the total, the total height of the building.
It's, it's actually, the way they measure it, we have to be less than thirty-five feet high. And we are less than thirty-five feet high. They measure the buildings, the roofline to the, to the midpoint of the, of the peak. So I, I don't have that exact number, but I know we comply.
Is, is the style of this proposed building the same as those new condos up on one-thirty-nine?
One-thirty-nine. I think it'd be, I think it'd be more like at the Summit Road, Mr. Goslin, I think, but with the garage under. So there's a garage under and then the living area above. And the garage under was to allow us to have more green space, to be honest with you. And it's a New England style, obviously people desire garages.
And, and these are going to be condominiums versus apartments?
That's correct. This will be, yes.
Oh, this is the old one, right? Just showing eight, correct? That was showing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that one right there was showing the eight, right?
Okay, yeah, just to let everybody know that was showing eight.
And did the planning board put any conditions on construction in terms of when you can have trucks going in and out of there? Any considerations like that for the neighbors?
No, the building inspector and the board of health has regulations as far as hours of operation. And we have an operation and maintenance manual that we have to submit so that if we have to put down like gravel so that there's not dust or anything like that.
Was, was there any consideration given to using that paper street and putting up single-family houses?
A number of years ago, I represented a different gentleman who looked at doing that. And I don't recall his name. And we were looking at two or three houses. The problem is the cost of the road is substantially higher. The cost of building a road now is approximately one thousand to twelve hundred dollars per foot. It, it makes it very difficult unless you can have a number of house lots to cover those costs. And this, this way, we are building all private property, private roadways, so it's no cost to the town. And we can use that as a existing open space that it is.
I understand that, but it is, my opinion is changing the, the character of the neighborhood. That's that they are single-family, twenty thousand, supposed to be twenty thousand square foot lots. That's, that's what I think is dense, density, that's what they're talking about density in the bylaws, the fact that they're twenty thousand versus thirty thousand or forty thousand.
Most of the lots, I can't say most, majority of the lots in the muster field are well below twenty thousand, they're non-conforming lots. That's why the houses are very much closer together in that neighborhood than other neighborhoods, newer neighborhoods in Abington. They don't have twenty thousand square.
Except on this portion of Spruce Street, which is most, this, these lots are actually, that portion of Spruce Street, there's a lot of good-sized lots. Actually, Mr. Keating, I was looking, Mr. Keating's property is almost twice the size as this property.
Mr. Keating's property is a large property, but it, I would not say that most of the houses are.
They're half acres, they're, yeah, they are. Okay, from what I see on the assessors plan here, on that portion of Spruce Street, once you take that corner, they're, they're all pretty good-sized lots. And I guess that's my other concern. If, if this happens to be approved, what's to prevent Mr. Keating from coming in and doing the same thing and maybe on a bigger scale? Because his property is twice the size of, of Mr. La Pointe's.
To answer your first question, this lot is under, is under twenty thousand square feet, this lot is under twenty thousand square feet, this lot is, this lot is under twenty thousand, this lot's 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 under twenty thousand, and that lot's under twenty thousand.
I'm not seeing anything you're putting up there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm going by the assessors map here, Sean, that you provided to us.
Yes. No, that's my bad for not hitting share. Trying to, are we going back to live meetings next month?
Yes.
Yes.
I could, I'm sorry. On the assessors map, this lot is less than twenty, this is less than twenty, this is less than twenty, this is less than twenty thousand square feet. This one is, this one is, this one is, this one is, this one is.
Yeah, and that one's not, and that one's not, and that one's not, and that one's not, that one's.
Yeah, this one is not.
It doesn't really matter, Sean, that's not my point. And the point is that it's, it changes, my opinion, it changes the character of the neighborhood. It really does. It's a I lived in that neighborhood for seven years, once, when I got married. And on that portion of Spruce Street, two forty-eight Spruce Street, actually, which is one of the smaller lots. And I think the concern of no sidewalks, that does bother me. Especially if you're adding seven new residences down that way. No, I think you're opening up the potential for Mr. Keating when he sells his property, does somebody go in there and do the exact same thing? But on a bigger scale. But on a bigger scale, um there was a couple of my concerns.
Again, I think we comply in all respects to the requirements of the special permit.
Well, you, you complied with a portion. It's, if you read the entire bylaw, it says shall also take into consideration those five points that you talked about. But it also says in granting a special permit, the special permit granting authority shall give due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent structures and uses in the district within which the same is located. And then after that, it says the S P G A shall also take into consideration the fulfillment of the following general conditions. So there are other things we can look at besides those five factors that you were pointing out.
There certainly are. And I tried to touch on those and the fact of the intent of this district. And I, I, I think I've made my point.
Yeah. And I did have one, one other comment. As far as you've talked about de minimis effects on certain things. The diminist, de minimis effect as far as the taxes generated from twenty eight thousand to forty thousand on a budget that probably now is close to fifty million dollars, that's pretty negligible as well, so on that side. Not that I don't like tax revenue, believe me, but I'm not sure it's worth, you know, another twenty five or thirty thousand dollars.
Any other members of the board? Any comments? Amy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you. Um I did have a quick question. I thought that there was a um, I thought that there was a question as to the lot coverage. I think it was Mr. Keating. Um I, I had written down that he stated that it was over thirty five percent. And I just was, I just, I actually went through everything and I, I couldn't calculate it.
That special permit was also approved by the planning board.
Okay, okay. And and then you, so um what else were you in front of the planning board for? Was it site plan approval?
Site plan approval and the special permit for lot coverage was the only things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Rich, any?
No, I think I've said enough tonight.
Um I do certainly share a lot of the concerns that Mr. Burbine raised. Um that said, um we are in, in terms of a special permit, it's, you know, the bar with respect to what needs to be met is not as high as you know, variance and they, they are meeting a lot of qualifications. I think the overall, you know, one that gives, we need to give the most consideration to is whether as you referenced, you know, it's in, in keeping with the nature and conditions of the adjacent, adjacent structures and uses. I'm mulling. I don't have anything else. Andy, you're looking at.
I'm just wondering, Amy, should we take a motion to close the hearing at this point or?
Um as, as long as you guys are um are done and ready to um deliberate, I don't think that there's any other um public comment nor comment from the applicant unless the applicant has something further to offer. Then you could close the hearing and deliberate and and vote.
Well, Seth, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I, I would make a motion to close the hearing.
Sure, second. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Hi. So as I was stating to Mr. Riley, those, those are my concerns is, you know, that there, there are certain criteria in the, in the bylaw that they have met, but there are other criteria that we can consider. And uh again, as you just said, Andrew, those include the nature and condition of all adjacent structures and uses. Characteristics would not be injurious to the public health, including safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare. So those are some other things we should be considering in uh in this application, in my opinion. And if we are going to consider those, I, I just think that this type of project is not in fitting with, with that neighborhood. I really don't think, I, I, it's, it's a nice looking project and all, but if, if it was someplace else. But to plop this down in the middle of a neighborhood like this, I think is uh I don't think it's, it's the right thing to do, in my opinion.
And I agree.
All right, um would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion on the petition of Abington Investments LLC, two forty five Central Street, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy five dash twenty one A four for the construction of a seven unit residential condominium at two eighty six Spruce Street. Property is located on Assessors Map sixty one lot seven in the R twenty zone. I would move that we deny the petition.
Second.
Close in favor?
I.
No. All right, well, the application's been denied. Uh Mr. Riley, you trying to unmute?
Okay, I'm sorry. Um I wanted to say thank you for your time and your attention to the matter, but I wanted to ask, I know you have nothing else on the agenda. If I could mention something for informational purposes, not related to this project whatsoever. Um like Mr. Negrelli had mentioned, we had a discussion at the planning board, the last planning board meeting about the housing choice law, and I'm sure Attorney Questel's very familiar with it, and we're all trying to get up to speed with it. It's something that I think that the zoning board and the planning board might want to look at. There's a couple of provisions that Abington can take advantage of and some things I might want to not take advantage of. But one thing in particular, it came up earlier tonight, was in-law apartments. If the town wanted to, they can not require the special permit for that. They, you know, you'd still have to abide by submit paperwork for the building inspector that it conforms with. You know, the less than nine hundred feet and blah blah blah. Um and if it conforms, you don't have to have a public hearing because as you alluded to, most of those are approved almost in three minutes. As long as they conform. And if they don't conform, they would have to come to the zoning board. There's another issue, uh Mr. Negrelli was talking about where um the town has to consider whether they want to create a zone that allows multifamily within a quarter mile of the train station. And I don't know where the town wants to go on that yet, but that was the, where we were talking with the planning board that it's a discussion, this is where a great example of where a town planner would be very helpful for the town. Um but I just wanted to alert the zoning board that maybe you guys could get some input to the planning board and we can, you know, kind of get some good answers moving forward. That was my editorial.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
So um Mr. Chairman, um back to the um, back to um two eighty six um Spruce Street, would you like me to draft the decision?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and with regard to, just to add on to Mr. Riley, or Attorney Riley's comments on the Housing Choice Act. Um the um essentially, um the, uh essentially D H C D is supposed to come out with some parameters regarding um what is required for the multifamily. The multifamily district within a half mile of the train station, et cetera, et cetera. Um and you know, a- as I'm sure you can imagine, um the M B T A and and D H C D have not come out with those parameters yet. And so the um, the penalty for not um, for not adopting this zoning bylaw would be that um the town is no longer eligible for grant money. Um but um the um, but D H C D and um the M B T A have acknowledged that since they have not come out with any kind of parameters for us to figure out how to zone this, um that the town, towns will not be subject to any penalty until they do come out with some kind of um, some kind of parameters for us. So the Springtown meeting is not, um it's not essential that we rush into any of this in the Springtown meeting. Um but um there's other things that the um housing choice bill will change, which is um there's certain zoning amendments that will only require a majority of a vote in a town meeting rather than two thirds. Um and also there are certain special permits that will only re- require a majority rather than for you guys, which it's unanimous. But um it would only require two, a two to one vote rather than a three to zero vote. Um but again, um you know, none of that necessarily happens until we make some zoning amendments, which we don't have to do at the Springtown meeting. The town would still be eligible for their grant money.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today.
Hey, no problem. It's always nice to see you guys. So I will draft that decision. I will get it over to Nancy. She can send it to you guys in draft form. And then um it can get finalized.
Right, thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Hi Nancy, thank you. Take care.
Thanks.
Thanks for telling me about the meeting, Nancy. I'm just still removing egg.
Removing egg, yeah, I heard about that.
She forgot she called me.
Well, I had mentioned.
She felt terrible. She sent me this whole email and I was like, you already called me. So it was fine. All right, guys. Have a good night. Take care.
All right, anything else before we adjourn for the night?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um I was wondering, Nancy, maybe you could help out on this one, but um new books with the bylaws in them? Uh I was just wondering if we need to have um them um updated?
I will see what the town clerks got.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um and Andy, you were going to mail the, um email me the cleaned up version?
Yeah, I will do that tomorrow morning. I'm sorry about that.
Super, no, 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 that's fine. Okay, thank you.
All right, other than that, motion to adjourn?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, with a second.
All fair.